Good evening and welcome to the reconvened December 22nd meeting of the Needham Select Board. This open meeting is being conducted remotely consistent with the current state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This particular meeting will include public comment for one item on our agenda. Anything shared or stated at this meeting will be a matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. First, we'll confirm that all members of the select board are present. Again, to the reconvened meeting, Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Bullion.
Here.
Ms. Cooley.
Here.
Mr. Morelli.
Yes.
Thank you. Now allow us for a motion for this meeting to be continued to the select board's next scheduled meeting of Tuesday, January 12th, 2021. If a technical problem prevents continued public access to this meeting. I think we did this before when we opened the meeting, but for those who are joining the meeting.
Second. You already did it.
Yeah, we did do it.
We did, yeah, yeah, we did.
So that's been.
I'll throw the second.
That was voted when we convened earlier, but I think it's important for people to understand who are joining the meeting now. That if this meeting is interrupted due to technical problems, we will take up the remaining business of this meeting on January 12th. Thank you. The first item on our agenda is a public hearing for EverSource for a grant of energy location. Energy grant of location, I'm sorry, on George Aggett Road. Is Mary Ann Carroll, Maureen, sorry, Maureen Carroll present?
Mr. Chair, I do not see her present at this meeting.
All right, so we will take up this item when she arrives and we'll move to the next item on our agenda. Which is the hazard mitigation plan. So we have Kim Donovan, Compliance Coordinator for our Department of Public Works and Michael Lethen, our Emergency Management Administrator. Welcome, and the floor is yours to talk about the emergent hazard mitigation plan.
You're muted.
Well.
Good evening.
Good evening and welcome. Good evening, Kim, and welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Sandy, do you have the presentation that I submitted as can you share that or?
I'll do that right now.
Perfect. Thank you. I hope everybody is well, staying healthy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming forward and sharing this with us.
Yes, I would have to say that it is I am bringing it on the home stretch. Rebecca Ping, when she was here, did a huge amount of work previous to this and Michael Lethen has taken over and Tim McDonald has been assisting as well. So with our help of our consultant, we have come very far on this entire project and I was amazed to see all the work that had been done. So without further ado, the hazard mitigation plan has been approved by MIMA and FEMA as stated. Can we go to the next slide, please? I just want to quickly go over the steps that were completed. What we need to do to approve the plan and adopt the plan. Finalization of that and then implementation of the plan. Next slide, please. So so far we have developed a hazard mitigation plan. We have drafted the hazard mitigation plan and posted it for public comment. The public meeting with the Needham Select Board happened on June 9th of this year. The draft HMP was submitted to MIMA and then subsequently to FEMA. Approval has been received pending adoption of the draft Hazard Mitigation Plan. Next step, thank you. So the draft plan was reviewed by MIMA and FEMA and revisions were made, but they were only minor grammatical, technical revisions, nothing further than what we had already proposed or presented to the select board previously. So it has been reviewed in depth by the board previously. They issued a notice of approval pending. And now the next step is for the select board to vote to adopt the plan for us to then submit that to MIMA and FEMA and for them to finalize and approve it. The finalization of the plan would mean that FEMA issues a formal plan approval. The approved plan is in effect for five years going forward, starting as of that approval date. And then the town is then eligible for FEMA mitigation grants. Next slide. During the implementation of this plan, periodic reviews by the town departments will be required. Integration of the plan's recommendations with other local plans and policies as determined throughout the town. Identifying funding sources and other resources for implementation. So looking at all of those resources that will become available to us once they have been approved through FEMA. Prepare for plan update year four and then conduct a full plan update year five to begin this process once again. And that pretty much covers what the adoption of this plan would require. In your packets, you have all been provided with an adoption statement on Needham Letterhead that I believe needs to be signed either by the town manager or by the select board. I'm not entirely sure which route we chose. Kate's raising her hand. So she is the nominated designee. If you approve it and it gets signed, we will submit it off to FEMA for their approval and then hopefully get some good grant money to get some of the really great projects listed on that Hazard Mitigation Plan started and moving forward in the next five years.
Thank you very much. Has anybody got any comments or questions? Matt Broly?
Just thank you. I'm looking through the plan. We've looked at it before. It's a very dense document. You just get an executive summary for that. We have new people tuned in and watching just what it is and why we're doing this.
Sure, absolutely. So the Hazard Mitigation Plan basically identifies areas of within town that we feel could be upcoming hazards, things like floods, things like weather events, things such as preparing for major power outages, different areas within the town that could lead us to susceptibility. So the state and federal government have actually required municipalities to look at all of their plans going forward and how to mitigate the risks of those items. And that's what their funding is geared towards or tailored towards being able to get you funding to pursue those projects. One specific one that comes to mind off the top of my head is getting generators for specific buildings that are in great need of maintaining power during great power outages or disasters or anything of those nature. Does that summarize what it does?
Okay.
Thanks. John Bullion?
Thank you. Thank you, Kim. Thank you, Michael. I went through it and, you know, a lot of detail with respect to historical data, historical storms, historical impacts that the town and the region of the state have experienced and it's fascinating. You know, lengthy document, as you know, and yes, we've seen this before. One thing jumped out and I have to take, I have to make the humorous response here because I really just jumped out. The table 23, I forget which page it's on, hail size comparisons. And it goes through P, marble or mothball, penny or dime, even though I take exception of that, penny is larger than a dime, so conference wise. Nickel, quarter, half dollar, walnut or ping pong ball, golf ball, hen's egg, tennis ball, baseball, teacup, grapefruit and softball. I really don't want to see it hailing tennis balls unless they're real tennis balls or previously used tennis balls. But is this a, I take it this is a standard hail size comparison chart that governmental agency developed. And it gives along with the descriptions that I just gave, it also gives the diameter, estimated diameter and inches.
Yes.
But I found it, you know, interesting that they chose some of the things that they did.
I would have preferred if they went with wiffle ball because those hurt a whole lot less than a softball as my daughters will attest to. Their softballs have come flying at my head one of many times.
I could see, you know, it would be difficult if it's raining teacups.
Yes, yes, yes. We didn't want to say cloudy with a chance of meatballs. So we tried to give it some contents. You know.
But anyways, no, thank you for the work that you've done on this and this is quite extensive. And it is, it is for a, for a weather junkie like myself, it is quite interesting. It really is. And looking at the impacts and the challenges that hazards that most people go about their daily lives don't even think about.
It is. It is interesting. I'm actually also partaking. Kate was lovely enough to let me give some of my time towards a flood mitigation effort that the Charles River Watershed Association is doing, taking a study to see if our flood options or flood assumptions are correct for our area given our proximity to Charles River. And it is astounding the amount of information and just data that they have to call through. So the whole team that went through all of these things to kind of simmer them down to this extremely, as you put it, lengthy document was, is quite impressive. And it took me three days just to read the material, never mind ascertain what they were even talking about, but it was a lot of work. So I give kudos to all that huge amount of effort that everybody did beforehand. And like I said, Rebecca did an excellent job and Michael, I'm sure will continue that effort. Going forward, I was just sort of here to take it over the finish line, so to speak.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. And the document itself that's being referred to here is on town's website under the agenda packet for this evening's meeting and it's well worth looking at. Any other questions or comments? This is an action item. There is a suggested motion. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the board vote to adopt the town of Needham's Hazard Mitigation Plan 2020 update.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? As we've heard earlier, this wouldn't authorize the town manager to write the official notice. Is that right, Kate?
Sign.
Sign, rather. I'm sorry. Yeah. Thanks for that correction. Any, no further discussion. We come to the vote. Dan Matthews?
Yes.
John Bullion?
Yes.
Mary Ann Cooley?
Yes.
Matt Broly?
Yes.
And the chair votes, yes, that's unanimous. Nice work.
Thank you for your work.
Coming in.
Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate it. Have a wonderful evening.
You too, and have a great holiday.
Thank you. You as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is, is Maureen here yet?
No, Mr. Chair, she's not. We are looking to see if she's going to be attending.
Okay, do we know if?
I would say it's a very straightforward grant of location with no issues.
So she doesn't need to be here for this in that case.
Unless there are specific questions by the public that we can.
So let's find out if there is anybody here who is attending this meeting from the public before we go to the board for questions, if any.
We would ask that you raise your hand.
Using the Zoom tool for hand raising, which is under participants. We've seen none. Okay, then thank you, Sandy. Is there any comments or questions from the board? The materials are complete, Kate? Is there a motion, Mr. Bullion?
I would move that the select board approve and sign a petition from EverSource Energy to install approximately eight feet of conduit in George Aggett Road. This work is necessary to provide underground electric service to 26 George Aggett Road.
Thank you. Is there a second to Mr. Bullion's motion?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Mary Ann Cooley?
Aye.
Matt Broly?
Aye.
John Bullion?
Aye.
Dan Matthews?
Aye.
And the chair votes, yes, the ayes have it. Thank you. That brings us to a COVID-19 update with Tim McDonald, who is our Director of Health and Human Services and has been doing yeoman service on behalf of the town and its citizens and keeping us all safe.
Mr. Chair, could I say, I meant to say under the Hazard Mitigation Plan, I apologize, I didn't hit on mute fast enough. I wanted to recognize and he's sadly already off the call, Michael Lethen, who is our Emergency Management Administrator, has been called up to serve our country and will be out of the country for a bit and we just great, so grateful for his service and wish him well.
And please convey that from.
Certainly will.
The board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Tim. You're here to update us on COVID-19 and we're here to thank you for all of your hard work. So.
Well, you're very welcome. We have a good team in Needham and we have a very collaborative approach. There's a lot of people that are working hard on it. I would like to give the board an update about COVID-19 and certainly take questions from the board as well. I've prepared a brief slide deck, which if it's okay with the board, I will.
Of course.
Find out why I can't see my screen. My apologies.
Tim, will you be the governor's latest?
I'm sorry, Mo.
Will you be also referring to the governors?
Sure. And I think if it's okay, I could do that maybe after some of the slides, but I think in general, for folks that didn't know, the governor made a series of announcements today about rollbacks that will take effect on the day after Christmas for a two week period, possibly a three week period. So we can sort of go into more of the details, but it generally involves reducing the number of people that are allowed to gather or the capacity limits for different sectors or industries, including restaurants, including other venues, some of which we don't have in Needham, but some of which do apply. I think part of the reason, as folks may be aware and are following the news, that cases have gone up quite a bit following Thanksgiving. Right on the screen right now, the select board will see the risk criteria which the state put into effect to determine community risk level beginning at the 6th of November. I think it's always somewhat instructive to look visually. I'm a visual learner, I guess, and just watch sort of the map change over time. So this is Boston Globe published because DPH, I think, thought that the visual was too striking, so they stopped publishing it. But you can see over the weeks how the map changes from predominantly green, which was what the state did when it sort of implemented its new risk criteria. And this was the result last Thursday. The DPH releases its information Thursday evenings. In working with the superintendent and the Joint Health and Safety Committee, Needham often tries to understand risk as part of a process rather than a specific red line somewhere. We try to assess Needham's risk in the context of surrounding communities, in the context of progressive trends. And we try to go through that discussion each week. We don't sort of say if it hits five, we immediately take this step. And I think there's value in that approach. I think it's an approach that engages a lot of the representatives from the school, from the public health community. But here's some of the communities that we generally consider ourselves in the context of. And this is based in part on geography, in part on number of staff members from the Needham Public Schools who live in these communities or number of students within the Needham Public Schools. Obviously, there are a number of Boston residents that are a part of the Needham Public School community. You can see Needham is doing fairly well in comparison to many of its surrounding communities, but the trends are going in the wrong direction. Positive testing rates are trending up almost across the board. Here's data that we've pulled, and this is for a two week period, starting from last Thursday. You might notice that we've, in the 19 to 34 age bracket, which is the category that the state presents, we've chosen to break it down further. That's because over the last month, really starting in the second week of November, a lot of Needham's growth in cases was driven by cases within this age bracket. So we wanted to understand whether the people within those age brackets were recent high school graduates who are probably in college potentially, whether they're, you know, young professionals or grad students, or whether there may be more established adults. This, this is a concern and certainly what we saw, you know, both in, anecdotally, when we talked to the contact tracers on the staff and in the data, was that there were a number of people who came home who were in their twenties from different parts of the country and unfortunately were COVID positive or tested COVID positive when they got back to Massachusetts and then they managed to infect a family member, household contact. We'll talk a little bit later about the growth, both in Needham and across the state of where cases are coming from, where there are clusters and the spoiler answer is household contacts. When we look at Needham's trends over time, this is an awfully busy graph, but I think there is value in it. Each of these weeks represents a two week period. Each of these columns represents a two week period. And within that two week period, you can see represented by the different bar graphs, the number of cases within the different age brackets. So you can see that, you know, of late, especially in the period running up to Thanksgiving, we were having a lot of cases in the high school and immediately after high school age bracket. When you look at the beginning of, you know, September, we had some cases in the, in the school age children, but you know, very few comparatively few cases in the young adults. So I think it's interesting just to see over time how Needham's data has changed. Sorry, this just is on the slide, but represents a period from September 1st to December 12th. Here's Needham's average daily incident rate and you can see that Needham, which is in orange here, it corresponds to be right there. Needham is in comparatively, in a comparatively good place compared to a number of other communities that we compare us to. But like every community, Needham has seen its rate go up significantly since, you know, if we look at, you know, October 22nd, Needham had 2.2 average daily cases per 100,000. And last week we were at 29.6 average daily cases per 100,000 population. So that's a very significant change. It mirrors trends across the board. And again, the increase in Needham hasn't been quite as bad as in other communities, but it has certainly been a cause for concern. Positive testing rate is is another category we consider, another risk factor. When you have more, a higher percentage of your population testing positive, that usually says that your growth, you'll have growth in cases within a week and you'll likely have a growth in hospitalizations within another week. So it's usually considered something of a leading indicator. Here again, I think I should try to probably make them the same color for consistency's sake, but Needham is in the blue and Needham's positive testing rate is 2.48. The, the criteria where Needham will tip from the yellow category to the red risk category is if its positive testing rate hits 5%. So we're still quite a ways away from there, but you can see that Needham has been going up fairly, you know, significantly over time as recently as sorry, clicking on the blue, you know, as recently as early November, we were at 1.03. So that that's one of the sort of the criteria we consider. We also look at, since Needham sits at sort of the intersection of Suffolk, Norfolk and Middlesex County, we do look at those counties as a whole, obviously. Each of those counties is large, represent large areas, Middlesex County especially, considering it runs from, you know, Newton all the way up to Lowell and the New Hampshire border. Basically, but you can see sort of across the board that the counties are mirroring the state trend. You can see that because Massachusetts is up here and the counties we're compared to are just under five and in the case of Norfolk County, just over four. A lot of the reason that Massachusetts is up here is being driven by even higher rates in other counties, including the North Shore and parts of the South Coast. Clusters is what is driving a lot of transmission in the state. The state sends out each week a list of cluster categories. It has definitions for those clusters. The specifics aren't particularly important, except to say that it usually is two cases sort of branching off from the initial case is what defines a cluster. I've highlighted two categories on this, and this is a statewide snapshot of clusters. One is household contacts and you can see the number of clusters is 15,000, the number of cases is more than 40,000. There's a number of ongoing clusters, you know, the total confirmed cases over time, and this is clusters in the last, that looks like a month long period. So 40,000 a month clusters over, total cases over time is even higher. I also highlighted in comparison, K to 12 schools is much smaller. There have been statewide, very few clusters in school of in-school COVID transmission. In Needham, we've been fortunate enough to have no confirmed clusters of in-school transmission. My wife is sort of a communication professional and she tells me that pie charts are not the best way to present data, but here's a pie chart, looking at the different clusters. I think the bar graph is a little bit more interesting. So this represents a period from October 1st to the end of last week. You can see the, in blue, within daycares, there's the total number of clusters Needham has had, which is eight, have met the state definition of a cluster. The total number of cases from those eight clusters. So those eight clusters resulted in 15 cases. And the number of Needham residents that were part of those cases. So there were six Needham residents that were part of those total of 15 cases. That might make some sense. A number of people, you know, send their kids to daycare in the community in which they work. So that the daycare, the students in daycare could be from, you know, Watertown and Newton and Wellesley and other communities. I had presented a similar slide like this to school committee last week and the superintendent made a request for this category, which is schools, because we have not seen clusters and we have not seen cases of in-school transmission. That's not to say that there haven't been school age youth that haven't got COVID. There have been, there've been plenty. But in almost all cases, they've engaged in some type of activity that's much higher risk than what they're doing in school. In school, there is distances, desks are set up, spread apart, you have to wear a mask, hallways are one way, stairways are one way, there's spacing in the cafeteria. And invariably, when we've seen cases that have involved school age children in Needham, it's been something to the effect of a high school age student had a couple of his friends over to the apartment complex in which that person lives and they all went to the gym and lifted weights without masks on for three hours. So, you know, a lot of out of school activity is what's driving the number of students of school age that have gotten cases. It's not their activities within the school itself. I think that's reassuring to me, to the superintendent, I think, to a lot of people because it says that the safety measures that have been put in place, that the work the town did, especially the building maintenance division to improve the HVAC systems and the filtration and the work that the school and public health did on sort of protocols have really made a difference, that they've, they've made the in-school learning environment safe for students and staff. We think that's a really positive thing. I will stop sharing, although certainly the select board can ask me to recall a slide if they would like. The governor, as we had mentioned at the beginning, did issue new executive orders, which will take effect, as I mentioned, on the 26th for a two week period. So they expire on January 10th with the possibility that they could be extended. And in most cases, it set, for example, restaurant capacity at 25% of the pre-COVID limit. It set small spaces that didn't have a clear occupancy level to five people per 1,000 square feet. It limited, it sort of reinforced the limits at outdoor gatherings and outdoor events, as well as indoor gatherings, indoor events, both in the public outdoor gathering, public indoor gathering, and it allows the private gathering. There are limits on the number of people that can gather at a private residence, whether indoors or outdoors. In this case, 10 people indoors or 25 outdoors. These are restrictions that the governors put in place to try to limit the spread. It's in response largely to what the state saw in terms of data following the Thanksgiving holiday, where a number of people unfortunately ignored public health guidance and did, did travel, did see friends, did see extended family, and there was a sharp spike in COVID cases and then a sharp spike in hospitalizations and that's been a real strain on the healthcare system. So these measures are in place to try to limit contact. I think working unfortunately under the presumption that a number of people are not going to follow public health guidance and are going to travel for the winter holiday.
Is that it, Tim?
Sure, I'm happy to answer questions if the select board has them.
Thank you very much for your presentation. John Bullion has a question?
Thanks, Tim. Good presentation, as always. So question, the Boston Globe had a an extensive article on restaurants dining inside at restaurants and how that they made the connection through the experts that they consulted and they reported in the article that, that indoor dining at restaurants is problematic. Have we looked at that article and the information that they referenced and? Have we looked at that article and the information in that they referenced and and how are we maintaining, you know, the elements of safety as everyone's trying to stay safe? And, and, you know, I mean, I have not, my wife and I have not been inside a restaurant, actually haven't even eaten outside of a restaurant. But we take it out regularly, every week, three times a week without fail. So what's your department's position on indoor dining? And, and what should we be guiding people to do?
Sure, and I appreciate the question. You know, something that a lot of people, when they saw the Globe article have, have emailed about or texted about. I think, you know, from my perspective, there was, it was a nice summary and it was particularly well-written. A number of the sources it cited weren't brand new. They've been sources that had come out in the previous, you know, couple of weeks or a month. I think it reinforces some things we already know. It makes plain some things that maybe people have been ignoring. I, I think, you know, one of the things that the governor has, has done, there used to be a dining limit of 10 people per party. The governor has reduced that to six and has said, you really should be dining only with your household contacts. I would tell you that I think our food service establishments have very strict safety protocols in place and, and I would know because I've reviewed them in terms of the way their staff handle themselves, the way the staff are masked, the way the staff space themselves. When other communities have seen and other states especially have seen indoor dining, much of the transmission has not been a waitstaff member or a maître d' or a busboy or whatever the right term is, infecting you as a diner with COVID. It's often been you gathering with five or six other friends, which represent five or six different households and being unmasked in close proximity to each other. So, you know, I think that, that's unfortunately one of those situations where the restaurant is the destination that, that might be responsible. But the diners brought it in themselves. The restaurant didn't bring it in. Needham Restaurants have done a, I think, a very good job in following the, the state regulations and answering concerns and questions from local public health. They have adequate spacing. Many of them have taken steps to either upgrade their filters or install temporary filters or just improve air circulation. They've spaced out a lot of tables. Many of them have removed tables rather than just sort of saying you're at table one and you're at table three. They've taken away table two and four and spaced out one and three even further than is required. So I, I think everyone has to determine their own level of comfort with the different risks that are incumbent on, on sort of everyday life. And there are some people for whom if they want to support local business that, that take, getting takeout would be a very good option. There are other people who feel more comfortable with indoor dining. I, I would say, you know, that I probably fall slightly in the middle. I think there's ways to dine safely and that would be having your immediate household be the people that are dining with you, not bringing friends, not bringing extended family, not using it as an occasion to gather and mix multiple groups. I think that's where people could be exposing themselves to a lot of potential risk.
Okay, thank you.
Matt?
Thank you. And I'll kind of piggyback on that. I read that article too, and you know, I saw some issues with it. I didn't maybe see it the same way as, as John did, but I guess what I, I've eaten at restaurants indoors probably seven or eight times. And I don't know, Tim, can you tell me coming out of Needham, I know that was discussed in the article too about, you know, the numbers and how reliable they are, but actually coming out of restaurants, we talk about contact tracing or clusters. Have we had any in Needham that you're aware of?
So I have to answer this question a little bit delicately. There are a number of different type of businesses that fall into the food service establishment category. Needham has had one case in a food service establishment category. That case was not a restaurant, that was not a takeout place, that was not an indoor dining place. So you can, you know, maybe, there are other types, there's food construction, there's catering, there's other different types. So thus far, Needham has had no confirmed cases from indoor dining.
Right. And I just think that's something, and I know you can look at numbers different ways and trace them different ways, but I just think just as a general statement, that's a good one. And I think it can, as you said, can be done safely, you know, if the right protocols are put in place and, and it's up to everyone to make their individual decisions. I'm happy that Needham, I looked at other towns, I, I know restaurant owners in other cities and towns that have that they clamped down recently, you know, with a, having to get a waiver for something and gyms as well. So I'm glad Needham kind of sat back and had a very more, much more deliberate approach on how are we going to handle these? And I thank that, that look to the, you know, to do it that way. I think that if there's, you know, the filtration is a big thing and I've had discussions on that. There's a way the Board of Health to kind of have some parameters on, you know, if you have this filtration, this is probably a better way to do it or or high ceilings or, or try to give people some comfort to understand that that might be, you know, it can be safe if they choose that adherent things that make it safer. I don't want to pit one against the other, but I just think people, the more they know, the more they can make that informed decision. And my, my last comment is on the vaccine. So I've been asked about this. I know you probably get a bunch of calls every day on this and how it's going to be distributed. And I understand, you know, we know the guidelines, you have different phases to it, but when that does, when someone is in that phase one category or that phase two, how are they going to be notified and, and how is Needham, you know, prepared? I guess we're getting special equipment for, just to discuss what we're doing for the vaccine.
Sure. And if I could, I think touch maybe on your first statement, I, I think we, we try to do our best to make sure that residents of Needham are safe. It, COVID is a risk. It is out there. People need to be aware of it and they need to, you know, listen to guidance, make smart decisions and understand that nothing is completely risk-free. So they have to balance in their life, the choices they make based on that information. We have worked with restaurants the entire time. We put in, you know, very strict guidelines that match the state. We helped restaurants make sure that they could comply with them. And we followed the data. I think if, if we were having this conversation and Needham had a half dozen clusters in restaurants, we would have a different posture. But we, you know, I, I think we're obligated to try to follow the data and the data has, has shown that Needham Restaurants thus far have operated in a safe manner. And I think we hope that they continue with that. And, and part of that is the people are coming into restaurants being responsible. It's, it's not getting large groups together. It's certainly not dining. If you have a fever, any sort of cough, you know, people who are going into the restaurants, the customers have to be responsible as well. Your question about vaccines is a good one. We certainly are getting a number of them. The CDC has released and then the state has sort of clarified some information about the different phases. I think Kate likes to say that she's 257 million and one in line. So there certainly are different phases at which people, based on occupational category, age, particular risk factors would be included. At, at the very front of phase one, which is what we're in now, is sort of front-facing COVID-facing healthcare workers. So those are intensive care unit nurses, respiratory therapists, emergency department doctors, that sort of thing. Near the back half, the second half of phase one is sort of all other healthcare workers that maybe aren't as directly COVID-facing, including ancillary and support staff. So all of healthcare workers are considered in the phase one category. Also in there are public safety agencies. And so that's emergency medical services, police and fire. And Needham obviously is a little bit different because it has a basic and advanced paramedic level EMS service as part of its fire department. But what local public health has been told is that it will play a role in supporting the vaccination of public safety in its community and in surrounding communities. So Needham has worked with seven other towns to indicate to the state that we have a number of capabilities in terms of storage capacity, in terms of part-time staff, per diem nurses, in terms of medical reserve core volunteers. So we are sort of ready and able to begin vaccinating public safety the minute DPH gives us the vaccine. How fate, you know, later phase one and phase two vaccinations occur, I think is still a little bit to be determined. You know, the staff at small doctors offices, do they get vaccinated at a community-run clinic? Do they get vaccinated as part of sort of whatever maybe hospital chain they eventually report up to? I think those are sort of good questions that need to be answered. And I know people are anxious to get them, but we don't have clarity on that yet. Certainly local public health, but also, you know, the CVSs and Walgreens of the world, your doctors, sort of ambulatory care office will have a big role in, in vaccinating the sort of general public groups. So those without those, not those who are in a nursing home, but, but sort of the, maybe a number of the folks on this call who might like Kate, be 257 millionth in line or maybe are slightly earlier depending on age or occupation.
Thank you again.
You're muted, Mo. Yes, I am. And thank you. Mary Ann, go ahead.
So, um, I guess I would be interested, Tim, if, if we have restaurants that we've worked with, with filters and things like that, it would be valuable, I think, to know who's actually made the investment to update their filters. I think that's a good piece of information for people. I think it doesn't solve all the issues. I mean, you think about the Korea restaurant example, right, where it's something about the ventilation that goes from one side of the room to the other, you're not going to solve everything, but it certainly is a factor in improving that. And I think if there was a way to signal that to people, that that would be helpful information for them.
Absolutely. And we're, we're happy to do that. I do know that the, the Korean restaurant example, and then there was another one a little bit earlier from Hong Kong, sort of involved, you know, window unit air conditioners essentially with no filtration at all and people being directly downwind of someone who is particularly infectious. So it's kind of a rare confluence of a bunch of, of, of events. But we're absolutely happy to work with restaurants and certainly to provide recommendations.
Okay. Because, because I do agree. I mean, the challenge is you don't know who's infectious when at this point. And, you know, so that's going to continue to be a risk for people that people are just going to have to live with.
It is. I do want to be cognizant of there are, you know, a number of financial challenges affecting restaurants. I know obviously, Mary Ann and Mo, you headed up sort of the, the working group that helped to address a number of ways to make restaurants to pivot town regulations so that we can more appropriately accommodate restaurants. So my board chair, Dr. Brown, has experienced working on sort of modeling for filtration for, for smaller spaces. So I'll, I'll certainly connect with her and figure out how we can give some advice on that.
Okay. And then the last thing I was going to say was congratulations on being the, the Washington Post's go-to voice of reason for municipal COVID facts. So
Thank you.
I keep seeing you there.
It's great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, Tim, and thanks again for your work. I think everybody appreciates how hard this is on our public health people, especially. So thank you.
Happy to be here. Thank you.
Dan Matthews, you're unmuted.
I did want to just kind of ask one thing maybe to flag. It doesn't affect us right now, but I had seen some coverage in recent days about some discussion of some mutation, you know, some the appearance of some mutations of the disease and some, some, what seemed to me, and I'm, I'm a layperson, but overreactions of closing borders and so on, in the sense that that almost attribute like intelligence to the disease, trying to work its way around human defense. No, it's, as I understand it, it's natural selection. This is a disease. All viruses have some potential to mutate. This one has a higher potential than others. Some, some mutations may be worse, more contagious is this one that they're talking about, some less so. I don't think any of that, what I've read really changes anything. We don't understand a lot about this disease. We've learned things that we need to do to be careful and we need to be very careful because there's lots of things that we don't know. But I, I guess I, you know, from reading in, in, in very recognized publications, this kind of breathless to me, discussion of the thing, it's worrisome because part of public, the public health response has to do with being calm, consistent, persistent. And just staying with this thing for what I think is going to be another five months or so of this. And not overreacting in one way or another, but just trying to get it right.
I think you hit on a sort of a couple of important points. I think there is some degree of overreactions and Mary Ann mentioned that I had gotten some coverage in the Washington Post. I think if you're willing to talk in exclamation points, there's some type of publication that's willing to publish you. I'll just say that and hopefully that's not what I do, but I think other people certainly can, can react strongly to something and then get themselves in the paper. The COVID-19 has mutated more than 2,000 times. All viruses mutate. If you think of the number of people it has infected and the number of hosts it's been transmitted to. Flu is one of the best examples because flu has a terrible copy editing function. So flu mutates so rapidly because essentially when it tries to replicate itself, it makes mistakes all the time. COVID doesn't have quite that level of, of mutation ability. We don't know right now, and I think we have to sort of operate from a point of, we have no evidence to suggest that this mutation affects the effectiveness of vaccines. What has been documented to some degree, and I'd certainly like to see more data about it, is that it appears to be a little bit more transmissible. It does not appear to be more lethal. And in fact, often those two things are trade-offs. If you're more lethal, you're less transmissible. If you're more transmissible, you're less lethal. So I, I think what has been confirmed is that there's a strain that spreads a little bit quicker. Southwest of England, London area, it's one of the areas where it's been identified. It's been identified in some other places in small amounts too. I, I would sort of caution any Needham residents who are worried about that to focus sort of more on the here and now. And there are some very good guidance documents. There's some very good guidance about how they can keep themselves and their family safe. And that's from regular COVID or the, the mutation that's in England. I, I don't think you should glue sleep focused on whether it makes itself across the Atlantic Ocean, but just following the guidance to keep yourself and your family safe would be sort of what I would suggest.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you for coming in.
Happy to be here. Thank you.
Before we go to the next item on the agenda, John Bullion is asked to be recognized.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the appointments and the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? During then we come to the vote, Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Miss Cool.
Yes.
Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
And a chair vote. Yes, that's unanimous. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is our Director of Public Works, who's coming in to speak to us about three items. So I'd like to recognize Karis Lustig. Welcome, Karis.
Yeah. I'm here, I guess, for two more uplifting and positive things. The Department of Public Works of Needham has been recognized for two separate items that I wanted to bring to the attention of the board. The first one is the Water System Award, and I believe we have Sean Harrington and Steve Cusick also available. And the award that they received is from the Department of Environmental Protection. And it's a recognition of the work that our Steve Cusick and our water treatment plant staff has done in order to ensure that the town of Needham's water supplies and compliance. It does require a lot of work by the staff there. Especially, there's a lot of specific reporting and compliance functions that they have to perform at the water treatment plant and then report on that to the DEP. So I just wanted to recognize the work that they have done as it's been recognized by DEP.
Thank you, Karis. Does either Sean or Steve want to say anything before we call on the board for comment?
I'd like to say a few words. I'd just like to thank everybody in the Water and Sewer Department. It was really, uh, it was, it was really group effort, you know, by everybody to receive this award. And I'm really honored.
Thank you. And thank you for honoring the town by earning the award. Sean?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mo. You're welcome.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Thank you for having us here tonight. Thank you, Kara. And just to kind of follow up on what Steve just said, there's a lot that goes into this and we're here tonight, but everybody in the division does their part in one way or another to help us achieve something like this. So, so I, I could try to list everybody's name, but I'd probably forget one or two and get in trouble for that. So I I definitely though have to recognize everybody in the division, especially the people like Steve and a lot of the members of the division that have been around a lot longer than I have here in Needham. Their work is incredible and I'm, I'm fortunate to be the superintendent here in Needham.
Thank you very much. Other members of the board?
I'll say something.
Matt?
Go ahead. Tremendous accomplishment. I remember walking to that treatment plant when, you know, when it was built a couple of years ago, which is an amazing to be able to run it, run this town so smoothly.
Yeah.
Great testament. And Steve, I ran into your father today, actually. Said he's proud of you as well. So it's just
Thanks, Matt.
Yeah, great, great accomplishment. It's just great to have an uplift. Yeah, great accomplishment. It's just great to have an uplifting thing like that. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to say something? John?
Needham's water is great. And that's all. I mean, thank you for all you do. It really is. And, you know, people, you know, people I speak to in other towns are like, can't drink our water, can't drink our water. I'm like, we can drink our water, and it's delicious. So thank you. Tastes great.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John. Mary Ann?
I actually have a question. Does this also encompass the stormwater treatment? Is that part of this whole thing, or is it just the drinking water?
No, it's just the drinking water.
Perfect. All right. Thank you, guys. And it does work, so.
Right. Dan Matthews?
Just to kind of emphasize a little bit, there are lots of kinds of, there are many awards that you win by one really strong achievement. This is really an unusual feature of this award, is it's something that really takes sustained effort day after day over a period of years to really get something like this right. And that's really the way a lot of our DPW stuff works and why it works so well. And it really is good that you talk about it as a team effort, because that's what it is. It's a lot of people doing the right thing all the time consistently. And thank you.
Thank you. Kate, do you want to say anything?
Mr. Chair, I think the board is well aware of some of the difficulties the town has experienced with the DEP over the years, and I think this is such a testament to the fact that we continue to do on a day-to-day basis what it takes to have the water system running. It's a great job, Sean and Steve.
Thanks, Kate.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in. Karis, you have other items.
Yep. So the other one is also a positive one, and I'd like to recognize Ed Olson, who should be here as well. The town of Needham, for the 25th year, has received a recognition for being a Tree City USA. Ed Olson, I believe you've been the tree warden in the town of Needham for 10 of those 25 years. And it's sort of bittersweet, I think, that he's here tonight because we were supposed to be the host of their Tree City USA program this spring at Rosemary, and that was canceled due to COVID. So it would have been a particularly special year in that we were in our 25th year of recognition. So with that, I will turn it over to Ed.
Ed, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Karis. Thank you all. And I appreciate you all tonight, much like Sean and Steve and Karis, group effort here, 25 years, 10 of which I've been fortunate enough to be here for. But really, Matt mentioned it, my predecessor's predecessor, John Cusick, and then Lance, after John, really started this tradition. And I'm really fortunate to have a great staff, a certified arborist. I actually became a certified arborist myself in 2019, and it wasn't easy. I actually failed the test twice, just barely, but it was a very difficult exam, learning Latin names and all the things you needed to do to become a certified arborist. Even though I have multiple different higher education degrees, becoming a certified arborist was quite a challenge. And I give credit to Kevin Naughton, my assistant, Michael Logan, our great forestry foreman, and our two great certified arborists, tree climbers, Brad Bottom and Wade Marshawn, who I was fortunate enough to hire in my tenure here. And really, between the four of them and myself being the fifth, I don't know of another community in Massachusetts that has five certified arborists. So we have an incredible team. We're really fortunate, and I thank you all for supporting us and making us a great team, and I look forward to some great years ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. We all really appreciate all the work you do, and I know individual members of this board want to say something. So we'll go to John Bullion first.
Thank you. Thanks, Eddie. Thanks for the work that you do in this. So a question for you, which is, how long has the Tree City designation been awarded? How many years? If we've got 25, and I'm assuming we're 25 consecutive years, can you tell us a little bit about, you know, how this award works?
Well, I'm glad we're talking about that tonight, just personally here and not in front of town meeting, because honestly, Wellesley's got us by a couple of years. There's not many communities that have us. I think Wellesley and Amherst, Mass. are the two longest-standing communities. They have 29, maybe 30 years. Springfield, Mass., but we're right behind them, and hopefully we'll gain on them someday.
When was the designation first started? Do you know?
It probably, I'm assuming just about 30 years ago. I'm sure Wellesley and Amherst, Mass. and Springfield were the early adopters that were the first ones the first year, so.
Okay, Wellesley was Needham back then anyway, so that counts for us. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Matt, do you want to say something?
Absolutely. Ed, I've seen a remarkable difference since you got on board with our trees. And even lately, we have discussions in plantings and the thoughtful and deliberate nature that I hear of that goes into tree plantings and, you know, even on the comm, this will work, this won't work, here's why, this is invasive, we got to get rid of this. If we do this, this is a long-term solution. It's just, it's a different way of looking at tree and planting, and you're at the helm. You have a great crew, so congratulations. And I'm hoping that that is going to be postponed at Rosemary, or is that really, is that going to happen in the future? We'll have something in Needham, or are we back on the list?
Well, I'll be honest with you. As soon as DCR saw that location, I'm sure they didn't forget us, so we'll be back.
Thank you, Matt. Mary Ann?
So I was just going to say thank you, too. I'm so glad that you were able to come tonight because, you know, 25 years, even if it's a few fewer than Wellesley, it's still a big deal and represents a long-term commitment. And I do appreciate all the work that you guys do in thinking about what goes where and in helping people in town think about that as well. And the fact that we do have people who think about that means that we have beautiful streets to drive down. So I appreciate all of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Thank you, Mary Ann. And Dan Matthews?
Yeah, just echoing what others are saying, you know, the fact that we're in the program is just really, it exhibits what we do, and the valuing of the trees and taking care of them is something that people appreciate. It adds to the community in ways great and small, and people appreciate it. And so thanks, Ed. I think it's great work, and it's good to have this award again.
Thank you, Dan. And Ed, you appear before this board often on issues around tree removal and public trees, people's desires to do things with trees that sometimes aren't always in the best interest of the town. And you've always given us sage and very well-reasoned advice, and we really, really appreciate the work you do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, you're quite welcome. Thank you. Kate?
Thank you, Ed. I can't add to that. Well, you know, maybe, I don't know what we can do about Wellesley, but we'll think about it.
And we note in closing that not a single tree has escaped from Needham while it has been trimmed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Karis, do you have one other item?
Yeah. So the last item that we just wanted to bring to the board's attention was just an update from the Recycling and Transfer Station. I often say to Kate, I feel like it's the most visited place that people interact with their local government is through the RTS. And during the entire year, they have been open every single day, with the exception of the snowstorm that we had last week, in order to accommodate the needs of the residents to make sure that they were still able to dispose of their trash safely. So I wanted to bring Greg in. There have been some changes that they've made to the facility that are sort of longstanding, and then there are some questions that come up frequently that we thought would make sense to just provide some additional information on. So with that, as Greg gets situated, I will turn it to him.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg. The floor is yours. I haven't seen you since this morning. You're on mute, Greg. Greg, you're on mute.
How's that?
That's much better.
Very good. Well, Mo, it was good to see you this morning, and it's great to see everyone here. Happy holidays to you all, and thank you, Karis, for the invitation to speak with the select board this evening. As Karis talked about, we at the RTS have had to adapt, or I should say, adapt to COVID-19. And I just wanted to kind of walk you through some of the changes that we made out there. For those of you who come to the transfer station, Mo, certainly I know you probably recognize a lot of the things that have changed out there, but I thought I'd just walk the board through some of the major changes that we have made out there to adapt to COVID-19. One of the things we did back in April is the DPW basically split into A and B shifts. So there's a staff of 10 at the RTS, and we went to five persons on the A and five persons on the B, and we worked alternating weeks. And I have to say, it's a testament to everyone who works at the RTS that with that limited crew on a weekly basis, we were able to keep the facility open and operating largely as it operates today with a full staff. So certainly challenging, but a testament to everyone who works there to really pull that one off and to keep the place running safely and providing the services to the citizens of Needham. One of the things that we had to do also was to change or reconfigure the way that people enter the facility. So as you know, the main gate that people had historically used was closed. It remains closed today. And people now come in through the entrance to the right as soon as you pass the swap shop. We did that because we wanted to have a better sense of control over the people who were coming into the facility, and we wanted to be able to direct them to the drop-off walls. And that leads me to the next thing that we did. Once people entered the facility, we placed jersey barriers in every other parking space at the three drop-off walls. And the intention was to provide for more social distancing. So that, the jersey barriers for social distancing, combined with the staff's ability to monitor and regulate traffic inflows through the new entrance, really allowed us to work with the residents to direct traffic and maintain social distancing at the walls as a means of really trying to prohibit the spread of COVID. It's worked out really, really well, by the way, and it's a practice that continues today. As you know, we did close the swap shop, and the goodwill trailer has been taken offsite and has not reopened. So neither of those reuse opportunities are available right now. What I would say to anyone listening is that those facilities will be up and running at some point in the future, but we don't have control over the goodwill that's managed by volunteers. And the goodwill, again, they're wanting the all-clear from the state. So when we get the all-clear, the goodwill will come back as well. Early on, we did mandate the use of masks at the RTS for all staff. This is before the state, before, I'm sorry, before the town came out and said masks are mandatory. And we did institute a series of social distancing protocols at the RTS for the staff. They've worked out really, really well. We've placed HIPAA filters in the buildings. We did institute a one-person-per-vehicle protocol, and we have rotated breaks for the staff, again, all with the idea of trying to keep people safe. I would just echo something that's been said a number of times tonight, that the staff has done a fabulous job. And we have people who work there who are really dedicated to what they do, to provide the best service to the citizens of Needham, and they've really have pulled through as a team, worked really hard. And I'm very, very proud to be the superintendent, and to have the wonderful staff that I have. So again, my hat's off to them, and also to Karis and Bob. It's great to have wonderful leaders, very supportive leaders to work for and to collaborate with. So again, my thanks to Karis and Bob, and also to Kate as well. So that's really some of the things that we've done out there to manage COVID-19 at the RTS. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Thank you very much, Greg. And, you know, every time I use the RTS, I'm always impressed with how smoothly it runs. Really appreciate it. I'm sure the citizens of the town do as well. Other members of the board? Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Greg, thank you, and thank you for all your work. You know, it's unique that in this time, the RTS, because people are home, right? The amount of trash and recycling and mail order and everything else has really just shot up. And you can see it when you, I think I saw detail there a couple of times, and then the leaf drop-off and everything else. So as things are getting more and more and more in demand for the facility, you also have to stagger shifts and make that work and parking, and it's just an amazing ability for the peak to come and you to be able to handle it during this time. So I know it was not easy. I think I've heard very, if any, complaints coming out of the RTS on how it operates, and just the volume of trash that you must have seen over the past, you know, eight months. You know, it's been eight, 10 months, it's probably been staggering.
You know, what I would say about that is it is astounding how many, how much extra trash we have seen. It's a function, obviously, of people working from home, cleaning out basements, garages. I thought months ago, we would have had the last of the garage cleanouts and basement cleanouts, but it keeps coming in. So I'm not sure where it's coming from. The town's making money on it, so I guess that's a good thing. And, but the residents have been great. They've been great to work with and to kind of collaborate on ways to, you know, maintain the social distancing protocols. You know, there's been a couple of instances here and there, totally to be expected, but the staff has worked really, really hard to work with the residents.
Great. Thank you.
Mary Ann?
Thanks, Greg. I think I've heard that the market for various recyclables has been changing over the course of the pandemic, and I just wondered what the town's experience has been there.
Great question. So we have seen an increase in trash. We have seen an uptick in recyclables, not to the extent that we have in trash, but the broader recycling market, the changes to the recycling market occurred before COVID, and so COVID wasn't a driver with regard to the changes. The change is more a result of China through its national sword program curtailing initially and now limiting wholly any exports from the US into China of our recyclables. And that's changed the dynamics within the recycling markets, both nationally and internationally. So what's happening now is the value that we were getting for recyclables about a year ago, it's disappeared. We are only getting money for cardboard now and for other commodities. This will be our drop-off commodities, co-mingled, mixed paper, and single stream. Those are now commodities that we pay to recycle. We don't get revenue for. I don't see that dynamic changing anytime soon, although what I will say, we've noticed about a five-month trend where the prices that we are paying to recycle those goods is decreasing, which is good news.
Huh. I thought I'd seen something recently that suggested that paper at least was going up, and we had been speculating at home that was maybe everybody with the takeout containers or something having to be re-envisioned, but.
I can address that quickly. What we are seeing is a lot of Chinese investment in the US paper market. What they're doing is there's a Chinese company that has invested in nine paper mills in the US with the idea of processing paper and then exporting that pulp back to China. So because of those investments, we are seeing a rebound in the mixed paper markets. We're not seeing a significant change in prices, but that is something that we are anticipating seeing in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. John?
Thank you, Greg. And, you know, I do want to let you, you know, in on the fact that there's been, in our household, two rounds of cleanouts, and I've been notified that there'll be at least one or two more, possibly three. And I also want to say to Kate, you know, all that, all those packets that we used to get over all those years, my piles are going down. So, yeah, they end up in the recycling at the RTS. So if anybody wants to go through and do some dumpster dives, there's probably some good old reading there. But no, more to come. Want to assure you of that, but thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Dan, do you want to say something?
Yeah, just thank you, Greg. And it is, it's great work that you are doing and that the staff is doing to make, to have things running as well as they are. It's been a great help. And it's also good just to have this report, because people are interested, you know, they're interested in the things that they're still missing, such as the goodwill and the swap shop. And the idea that, okay, yeah, it makes sense to not have those right now. But we will in a few months, as things, as we work our way through this. And again, if we do what we're supposed to do, and we're patient and persistent, then we'll get back to something a little more normal. So it's good just to have the report and have it presented as clearly as you have. So thank you.
Thank you.
Greg, before I give this over to Kate to say a couple of words, has Amazon Cardboard become the official Needham carton, or?
Well, you know, Needham certainly is benefiting from the boom that Amazon is experiencing. The cardboard is, the amounts that we're seeing is reflective of Amazon's business model, which is good for Needham because we make money off the recycling of cardboard. But yes, we are seeing a lot of cardboard, and we're certainly going to see a whole lot after Christmas.
Yeah. Thank you. Kate, please.
Mr. Chair, I would just want to thank the board for your support in when we pivoted to make the changes at the RTS, which we didn't know how that would go. And I would echo what Greg said is. And I would echo what Greg said is, it's really amazing that through the bleakest months, we were able to be open every day, that we are scheduled to be open and accept residential trash. Um, and I would say probably Greg would agree, this is the best RTS crew I have ever worked with. Charis is nodding too. They're so professional and engaged, um, at the RTS. And I think if you go there, you can really feel it. So, um, we appreciate your work, Greg. Thank you.
Thanks.
It's my pleasure. I thank you all for your time. Happy holidays to everyone. I look forward to seeing you again.
Likewise, Greg. Thank you very much for coming in. Charis, is there anything else you'd like to say?
Oh, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to, um, honor a couple of our divisions today.
Well, thank you very much for coming in.
Charis will be back in January with several other items.
It's always good to see you, Charis. You're doing a great job. Thanks.
Yeah.
That brings us to the town managers portion of our agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Of the floor.
The first item is, uh, we had promised the board an update on, um, COVID expenses and where we, uh, feel that we're heading for FY21. This is the FY21 portion. Uh, there'll be more conversation about FY22 in January. And I would ask Dave to give us an update in that.
Good evening. The, um, uh, an update is, uh, from what we discussed before is we provided to you, uh, the amounts that have been expended and paid, which we have submitted for reimbursement through the, and received reimbursement from the Commonwealth Cares, um, Cares Program. We're also under the impression that the deadline for the Cares Program will be extended from December 30th, 2020 to, uh, December 31st, 2021. That is certainly, uh, going to be helpful, uh, because we still have many of expenses that have been identified. That will happen after December 30th. And, uh, provided the president signs that, that will be very helpful, uh, for cities and towns across the United States and across the Commonwealth. The, um, town has also, uh, prepared a submission for reimbursement from FEMA, um, which is a different, uh, program, which the town applies for directly. The Cares Act is administered by the state and the state does the final accounting to the federal government. And in that, there are reimbursements at 25% and others at 100%. In the case of FEMA, if there are eligible expenses that the town has incurred related to cares, uh, I'm sorry, related to COVID, we, uh, will receive 75 cents on the dollar. We have not yet heard back whether what we have submitted to date has been accepted. And with that, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Dave. Are there any questions from members of the board? Thank you very much, Dave. Appreciate it. Kate, do you have anything to add?
Um, yes, Mr. Chair, I would add that if the school committee, uh, has, um, been discussing this with the superintendent and they've, uh, been meeting with the finance committee. And we're cautiously optimistic that, um, within the operating budget that we have and perhaps considering the reserve fund, that, uh, we may not need supplemental appropriation, um, and have to find funds for that. But, uh, that's still, it's still only December, so we'll continue to keep you posted. The extension of, uh, the potential extension, which looks like a certainty at this point, of our ability to access the Cares Funds that has been allocated to us, um, is a real, it's very, very important. And that's really helpful because, um, many of the items, if you can only get reimbursed at 25% on the dollar, you know, you can't, can't get up enough, uh, to, to get reimbursement. So, uh, we'll keep you posted on that. We'll probably have another update in two months.
Thank you very much, Kate. Thanks, Dave. Uh, Matt, did you have a question or comment? I thought you raised.
I was just saying fingers crossed.
Oh, yes. I think we've all got our fingers crossed, just invisible. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, the next item, Mr. Chair, is, um, the budget priorities. At your, um, meeting in November, uh, November 24th, you discussed the budget priorities and we'd asked that the board, um, approve them. These are a little different from your goals in that they are the specific items that guide, um, the creation of our capital improvement plan and our operating budget. And, um, as we know, the, some of the highest items that we've talked about involve, um, our response to the pandemic and, um, uh, work that we're doing on race equity. So, um, these are the budget priorities that will be inserted in the budget document that we, uh, present to the board at the end of January.
Thank you very much. Uh, any comments on the budget priorities? And if not, is there a motion? Uh, Mr. Bullion?
Uh, I would move that the board approve the proposed budget priorities for the FY 2022 operating and capital budgets.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded? Uh, any discussion on the motion? That brings us to the vote. Mary Ann?
Yes.
Uh, John?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Uh, Kate, you're on a roll.
Um, approval of the FY 21 and, uh, 22 goals. Usually we set these in the summer and adopt them in August, but it's all been slower, uh, this year because of the competing priorities and also the difficulties with, uh, communication. But the board did discuss the, these goals, um, several times. And I think that, um, the, it's a clear that the, the number one priorities are to respond to the pandemic and, um, to continue our, um, diversity, equity and inclusion work. Um, the other ones, uh, there are some there that, that, uh, we've proposed that are in a tier two category. Some of them would just will naturally happen. But for the most part, our special projects are, uh, likely to be in the FY 22 portion of these goals. But we would recommend that the board continue your practice of adopting them. So that we'll have them in the next summer, we can work on it, updating them hopefully in person.
Thank you very much, Kate. And, um, just so folks who are watching know, these guide the work of everybody in the town. And it makes, it keeps us on a steady keel. So they, they're very important and they're well discussed. And, uh, with that, I'll open up the floor for any discussion or, or a motion. John?
Uh, I would move that the board approve its statement of goals for FY 2021 to FY 2022.
Thank you. Second, there was motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing that, oh, Mary Ann?
I was just going to observe that, um, people who do take the time to read the goals will notice that while it is absolutely very important that we're focused on COVID-19 and on our racial equity work, there are many, many areas that the town is working on. And everybody at the town is working very hard to accomplish all of the goals that are set in any given year, um, and make as much progress as we can on them. So, um, I don't want to minimize the amount of regular, normal, typical, sustained, day in, day out work that is going on to advance the town's goals on every front.
Thank you for saying, Mary Ann. It's very important that folks understand that. Thank you. Um, any other discussion or comment? Uh, Mr. Matthews?
Uh, just, um, yeah, we really added this year, the, the, the COVID and the race equity goal areas, which are really critical and get a major focus. Uh, one thing that kind of notes and kind of it's on the, the, to the, maybe on the other side of, of the coin that Mary Ann mentioned is that there is a lot of other material here and, and specific goals and targets and things that we'll work through. Usually in a more normal year, if you could say that, um, the board puts a lot of time into kind of, because as these goals go on and progress is made or we encounter new features, they kind of get tweaked or adjusted or added or, or backed off a little bit. Uh, a, a portion of that didn't happen, uh, this year because of the press of other business and the way that we're organized. So I, um, you know, when you get past the, the COVID and the race equity, a lot of the stuff, at least language wise, has a kind of a COVID haircut look to it in the sense that there are things that really, we, we, we really need to kind of look and, and itemize and, and kind of adjust some of these things to some of the changes. But they will do for now, they represent a very large and broad scope of individual projects that are ongoing. And the two top priorities, which is said are the, are, are the COVID response and the race equity work. Um, I think we're, we're on a, a good track with them. So I think this puts us in a good, a good position, uh, for the coming months. And yes, it will be good to get together in person again, when we can, to, to work out some of the details.
Thank you. Um, is there, has the motion been made? Did I lose track here?
Yes, made and seconded.
So we, we come to the vote then, unless there was further comment. Uh, Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. That's unanimous. So these become our official goals. Um, thank you very much, Kate.
Two more, Mr. Chair.
Yes, you do.
Uh, this is our final, uh, third and final discussion with the board about the FY 22 to 26 capital improvement plan. We laid out the spending priorities for FY 22, uh, with their funding sources, uh, put forward into the tier one and the tier two categories. And, uh, we updated, uh, those la, at your last meeting. Two of the big items include a potential overage at the public safety complex due to, um, problems associated with groundwater at station two. And then, uh, the ridge hill demolition that we talked about where the estimate came in higher than, uh, folks have been expecting. Although there's still hope that it will come in under that budget. And then we presented to you, Mr. Chair, the, um, the outlook for FY, uh, 23 through 26 and the projects that we are expecting, um, and the funding sources that we recommend for those. And finally, there are several large ticket items that, uh, we are not recommending for funding this May, but that we know all through the spring and the summer, we will be having further conversation with this board and the school committee and the PBBC and the finance committee relating to Emory Grover, the DPW building and, um, the school master plan projects that have been proposed. So, uh, we would expect to see, um, decisions made on those over the next year and, uh, the capital plan would so reflect. I would add finally that in the, um, Dave, do I have this right? The late February, early March timeline, um, Dave will be updating the facility financing plan. Uh, so that, um, there, all of the, uh, relevant boards and committees will have information before voting on warrant articles. Is that correct, Dave? Do I have that timing right?
That's correct.
Thank you. Uh, any questions or comments for the town manager with respect to the capital? Hearing none, this is an action item. Um, is there a motion? Mr. Bullion?
I would move that the board approve the FY 22 to 2026 capital improvement plan for transmittal to the finance committee.
Thank you. And moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Uh, Ms. Cooley?
Aye.
Mr. Bullion?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Borelli?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That is unanimous. Thank you. Uh, Kate, do you have anything else?
I do. So, um, just wanted to make sure the board was aware of the request that had been filed for CPA, CPA consideration. As you know, the process begins in December and will go all the way through March. They'll come in and have a conversation and consult with you and the finance committee. Um, there are a number of projects, but there are several, um, that would, uh, require the board's endorsement as the board having jurisdiction over the property. And that includes, we have filed an application for town hall clock restoration. The CPC will be considering whether, whether that's a restoration or a repair. So we'll be, um, meeting with them and, and talking to them about that. You, uh, the town common restoration, beautification, we had a presentation, an excellent presentation month or so, or maybe a month and a half ago. And, uh, that project continues, um, to move forward and there'll be a final proposal to the board, um, at that point. The Fisher Street railhead, uh, trailhead construction, we did, um, have funding for design for that project. And we were able to do it in-house. So our proposal is to return the design, uh, funds and ask the CPC to appropriate them again, to recommend appropriation of them again for the construction. This is a minor construction of, um, some parking areas and, uh, some kiosks at the, um, Fisher Street end of the trail. So it, it really would be helpful for, um, to have a few parking spaces over there. And then finally, there's a request for the design for, um, sediment removal at the town reservoir. Uh, this is something that we'll be making a presentation to the board about. It is similar to the project that happened at Rosemary. It would clean up a category five water body, would help improve, uh, the open space. It is a man-made reservoir. It is a problem that the town, you know, essentially created by, by our forebears. Um, and we are exploring alternate methods of removing the sediment. Uh, you know, the project at Rosemary seemed to go on forever, although it was on schedule by the end. Um, so we'll have more information for you, um, about that project. This is actually a request for design funds for that project. So I would ask that the board, a vote to endorse those projects, which are under the jurisdiction of the select.
Thank you, Kate. And that motion would mean that we would endorse that the CPA recommend this to town meeting. Correct?
Well, Mr. Chair, I think it's, um, it's endorsing the submission. Um, I, I think that, uh, once more information is known and more conversations with the CPA, uh, when they get to the warrant, um, you know, it may be that, that the board has a different view. But we, we ask that they be put in the queue so that we can have these conversations.
Thank you for clarification, Kate. Uh, John Bullion?
Uh, I would move that the board vote to endorse CPA funding applications for town hall clock restoration, town common restoration and beautification, Fisher Street trailhead construction and town reservoir sediment removal.
Thank you. Is there a second? Uh, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Um, Dan Matthews?
Yes.
John Bullion?
Yes.
Mary Ann Cooley?
Yes.
Matt Borelli?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. The yeses have it. Thank you. Thank you very much, Kate. Do you have any, you don't have anything else, do you?
I did not.
So that brings us to, uh, committee reports. And I've heard from two, uh, board members, Dan Matthews and Mary Ann Cooley. Mary Ann Cooley, uh, would you like to speak to us about the items you're responsible for?
Um, I think I'm just speaking about Noori tonight.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I was going to say, is there something else that I forgot?
I don't know. I mean, we often hear from you on the downtown work, but, uh, Noori, I think is the subject tonight.
Not this evening. So, um, Noori meant last night. Now, just to update everybody, I'm, some of you were at the meeting. I think some of you have subsequently watched it. Um, but we heard a report from the superintendent last night, um, with, uh, Joanne Willoughby and Mary Lammy, um, with him discussing the work of the Rio Coalition and what's been done within the schools. The schools, as you know, a couple of years ago, did an equity audit and then they formed the Rio Coalition and they really used that, the equity audit as a way of sort of shaping and guiding their work, uh, going forward. Um, this pat, current year, um, a couple of things are going on. They've created a racial literacy curriculum at the elementary school level. That's, uh, in place at all the elementary schools. So now somebody has the opportunity to walk into their classroom and find some books on the bookshelf that might look like them, um, which was not true from classroom to classroom beforehand. Um, there is a, a course up at the high school related to having, uh, uncomfortable conversations. And that particular class is also providing workshops and training for grade, now all grade nine students on having these difficult conversations as well, with a way of starting to build a competency that will grow up as the, um, classes age into the high school. So working there. So they're doing some work, both at the elementary level and the high school level. Um, each school does have a responsibility for setting goals related to racial equity as part of their regular school improvement plan process. And those goals are reviewed annually. Um, one of the facts that the superintendent shared with us is that during his tenure as superintendent, um, that the population of students of color has increased from about 8% of the district to about 22% of the district. Our staff of color really has not changed over that period, but the students have changed pretty significantly and continue to grow there. So that has other implications as we're working. Um, I think it's fair to say that there, the discussion, uh, took longer than we originally planned, but it was a rich discussion. And the committee was, the working group was really quite engaged. Um, after the superintendent left, we did think of some follow-up questions that we will get answers to, um, so that people can, can understand those things. But the biggest question was, you know, how can Noori and other people help to build support for the schools as they're taking on this, uh, significant work? And how do we, how are we certain that the students, in fact, who are in the schools are actually feeling supported, um, and safe and like they belong, which is a priority for everybody? Um, so work continues on all those fronts, but, um, that is my quick summary. Matt, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I thought that you summarized it beautifully. I think it was a robust discussion. I think people realize, including myself, how much is being done on so many levels throughout meet and public. on so many levels throughout Needham Public Schools. And at the end of the conversation, as you said, there are some questions to say, how about this? Can we do this? Or can we find this information? So it, it was a good give and take. And there was some concern that this was just a short-term kind of goal, or just in the moment. And it was really portrayed as a long-term goal to get this as we move ahead, long-term solution, to try to find ways that we can address this issue. So I thought it was terrific and it was good. Uh, I think this was the meeting that was really the first kind of substance meeting of hearing what the town is doing, um, and getting feedback on maybe if we can do anything differently or better. So.
I think, I think we had hoped to do a couple of other things last night, um, that wouldn't have taken quite as long as this discussion did. Um, we did take a, a look at how the work was laid out going out through the next six months. And thank you for Katie for really helping to organize that for us as we think about that rolling out. Um, we'll take a look at that. There was a question from one of, from, from Natasha about how we might be sure that we're covering everything that we intend to cover. So we'll just revisit that and, um, see if there's a way that we can make that clear for everybody and be sure that we are covering everything. But, and we had also hoped to get to a discussion of Article 17 with the committee to be sure that we understood what their, um, thoughts are as it relates to that town meeting article. But we'll come back to those, and we will continue to make progress.
Me too.
When's the next meeting, Mary Ann?
Um, the next meeting is January 11th, off the top of my head. January 4th, uh, January 4th. So on January 4th, I'll just encourage people to tune in. In fact, Lisa, um, McQueeney Smith will be back to work with us on the vision for the work of Noori. So we are expecting that she'll bring back, you know, maybe three particular ones that we will work at consolidating to one vision that we'll be then putting forward as a draft for people to understand. But people will get a look at that ahead of the meeting. So we'll let them know as soon as it's available.
And there are videos of the sessions available on the town website the day after the meeting happens. Is that right?
Yes.
And they're well worth watching. Thank you very much, Mary Ann. Do you have anything to add before I call on Dan Matthews?
No, let Dan, Dan must have a question, so.
I do. I just wanted to just check on the matter of the schedule. You've added the meeting on the 4th. Are you meeting also the 11th and the 25th and in January too? I just wanted to be clear for, because it, yes, I, I think almost all the members, if not all the members of the board watch, and, um, it, 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 it's a lot of work and it's very valuable. So thank you.
Yes, thank you very much for all of that work, both of you.
So it was really interesting when, um, Marcus, one of our committee members, had said that he really wanted to know when the recording was available to, to flag it for some other people and help them to know that they might want to watch and care about the work that the schools are doing. I think that's a great thing. All of those sessions are there, um, for people to watch and to hear, but the discussions have been really terrific with this group. So.
Yes, no, high-quality discussion, I think. Uh, uh, anything else? Any other questions for Mary Ann? Dan Matthews, uh, wanted a few minutes to talk to us.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just, I wanted to just take a minute to, to recognize, um, the recent passing of a distinguished town resident, Antony Sefalo. Um, Tony was really well-known to pretty much everybody on this call, but maybe not so much to some of the newer residents of the town. And I, I just wanted to, to say a few words because he was active for, for decades. He grew up here in town. He was active in the construction and development years during, when there was great change in the town. He participated in a lot of positive change that happened here in the community and stepped up in a lot of different civic activities o, over the years. Um, and, and one that stand, that stands out is the, is that he took responsibility for construction of the Vietnam Memorial. Um, yeah, that's, which was done at a time that was very difficult, uh, in that, in that town, in, in the town following the end of, of the war. He, he did so many things, great and small. And he was one, he was part of a generation largely gone from, from the scene now. But he taught not only with his vice, his advice, which was extensive and, and, and solid. I was, had gone to him about a couple of matters as recently as a few months ago. And, but not just only his advice, but his example. And he was a great contributor to the town. He was a good friend to the members of this board and a good friend to the town. And I, and I, and I appreciate having the opportunity to speak. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. And I don't know if we mentioned it here or not, but one of his last acts was to give, uh, one of his ancient and beautifully restored implements, a scraper, to the Needham History Center and Museum. And he, and that was very, very close to the end of his life. He always thought of this community and remained active in it till the very end. And he once said in, I'll call on you, Matt, uh, he once said in an interview we, we had at the Exchange Club with Skilkey Eaton about his time when he remembered Central Avenue as a dirt road. So he goes back a long way. And I think of the people on this board, other than Dan, who know him the best, I think that would probably be Matt. So go ahead, Matt.
Right, yeah, no, going back to those, I have pictures of that dirt road because my father and his family grew up, uh, down the street from the Sefalos. And I remember being five years old, he had a moped that it actually put you on the back of. We called him Uncle Tony or Mr. T. He was good, great friends with my dad and just a lot of, uh, a lot of memories. And you're right, Dan, you, you know, not to repeat, but contributions of the town, big and small. And he could tell you about every corner of this town and every story and every family. And that's just going to be missed. And Book of Golden Deeds winner, uh, for the Exchange Club, very proud of that. In his basement, if you go in it, it's like a museum, uh, when we were walking down there. And terrific friend of the vets. I got outpouring from the vets after he passed about how much he meant to them, uh, as a rock and as a storyteller and confidant. So, um, thanks for bringing this up, Dan. And, you know, thoroughly missed, had a terrific life.
And behind me, you can see Central Avenue from around that time. This is Needham History Center. So, yeah, he was a great guy. Uh, any other closing comments or remarks? Uh, then we will solicit a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Uh, Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you very much. Uh, this meeting is adjourned.
Happy holidays.